Ready, open, proceed.
Okay, stand by, Mayor.
All right, standing by, here we go.
Five, four, three, two, one, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the City Council to the Westminster Revival Agency Meeting, when now is 7:00 PM, Wednesday, August 4, 2020, oral call.
Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
That's Member Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here, thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, salute to the floor will be Councilmember Doe, invocation will be Vice Mayor Ho.
Please stand up, hand on your hearts. Okay, ready, begin.
Pledge religion.
The United States.
Republic of Wichita. Nation of God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
She muted.
Someone muted me, thank you, sorry about that. Please bow your head. We pray tonight to whatever source we turn for strength. We pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interests of our city and its citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe and Vice Mayor Ho. Any report from City Attorney?
You're muted, Dick. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. So I have a number of items to disclose at a closed session. Regarding the closed session item on potential litigation, the City Council on a motion by the mayor and seconded by Mr. Doe unanimously agreed for the city to pursue litigation by way of judicial foreclosure and probably delay the recruitment of city manager until after the next election. That's my report.
Thank you, City Attorney. Expert communication, we don't have it, so next, oral communication.
Sorry, actually have the report, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, hi. So staff has a request to move item 5.2 to before consent calendar.
Yeah, item 5.2?
Yes, that's the CARES Act item. We're just requesting it to be for consent calendar.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, so we have a motion.
Again, move it to the next calendar or?
Move it up.
Oh, move it up, okay.
Yeah, so we have a motion, a second, to move item 5.2 forward before the consent.
Yes. Wait, we have a second, so Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I will come back to him. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Are you with us? This is going to be an absent vote.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, so anything else?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, so next will be oral communication.
Yes, oral communications, we did receive two ecomments, so I will read those first. The first one is received from the, from Richard Jolly, and it states, "To the City of Westminster City Council, I find it very concerning in these financial times the city is in that there has not been an attempt to thank a family that donated $1,700 and purchased Ranger his protective vest. The officer did call and thank the family and said he would attempt to visit the family when it was safe due to COVID. I don't know why this hasn't happened, or maybe they are uninformed, which is unusual since they have their nose in everyone's business. At this time, it is too late for them, but it would be nice for the police department to acknowledge the gift." That was from Richard Jolly. And the second comment was received from Caesar Corvus from the Kennedy Commission, and it states, "Dear Mayor Tretah and City Councilmembers, this is regarding the five-year permanent local housing allocation plan. The Kennedy Commission is a broad-based coalition of residents and community organizations that advocates for the production of homes affordable for families earning less than $27,000 annually in Orange County. Formed in 1971, the Commission has been successful in partnering and working with Orange County jurisdictions to create effective housing and land use policies that has led to the new construction of homes affordable to lower-income working families. The Commission would like to commend the city for its leadership and commitment to an emergency shelter navigation center, rental assistance, and an affordability covenant extension with its limited local housing allocation plan. While these uses will provide much-needed support for the city's unhoused population and those at risk of losing their housing, use these uses will only meet a small percentage of the city's lower-income housing needs. It is important the city review its progress in providing new affordable housing for households with very low and low incomes. Per arena allocation progress reports submitted by the city, the city has seen 291 units built at the above moderate income level, while there were only two units built at the very low income level and three units built at the low income level. The Commission intends to partnering with the city to increase affordable home opportunities for lower-income households in the city. Please keep us informed of any updates and meetings regarding strategies to increase affordable homes for lower-income households in the city." And again, that's from the Kennedy Commission. So I have for comments, as far as requests to speak, I did receive three requests prior to the meeting. First from Dennis Cole, then Sylvia Mendez, followed by Terry Rains. So at this time, I will bring up Dennis Cole. Dennis, are you with us?
Yes, I am, thank you. My name is Dennis Cole, and I serve as Director of Access at the Orange County Department of Education, and I want to thank and commend the City of Westminster for your vision to create the Mendez Freedom Trail and Tribute Monument in recognition of the Mendez v. Westminster case, which led to the end of school segregation in California. As such, this case is one of the most important in California history and is an inspiration to all who value equal educational opportunity for every student. We at the Orange County Department of Education have been proud to partner with the City of Westminster on this historic project. Adolfo and the staff have truly been a joy to collaborate with as we envision the purpose of the trail and park. Our team at OCDE has helped to develop the educational component of the project, which will be available to schools across the county and across the state. Our team has spent literally thousands of hours on this project because we believe in this work. In 1945, Gonzalo and Felicitas Mendez attempted to enroll their children in their local school in Westminster only to be turned away because of the color of their skin. After taking their case to the State Supreme Court, they won their case and all students in California could now attend school without being segregated. So we are blessed tonight to have one of Gonzalo and Felicitas' children here with us, Sylvia Mendez, who has championed equity in education for decades, so you'll hear from her shortly. Because of the powerful symbol the Mendez Freedom Trail and Tribute Monument will embody, we know that the state has a deep interest and is watching this project closely as a model for the future. So again, I just want to say thank you for your vision for this historic project and congratulations on the great project you continue to make towards its realization. Have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Ms. Mendez, is she logged on here? Okay, so we'll go back to her when she logs on. So next speaker, Terry Rains. Terry?
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I'd like to know the roll call vote on the actions taken in closed session specifically to rescind the offer to Chutai and also to delay the hiring of a new city manager until after the election. Item 3.2 is to reject all bids for purchase and delivery of diesel fuel and gasoline for a second time because, quote, "After thorough review of all bids, staff believes additional savings to the city can be achieved by adding some clarification to certain bid items and rebidding the project," end quote. All this has happened so much in our city. Surely, we have put out, put the same item out for bid before. Item 3.3 is a $324,970 contract with De novo Planning Group for consulting services to update the city's housing element. Why is this contract dated July 22nd? Was this put out to bid, and if not, why not? I think we would benefit from a fresh set of consultant eyes on our general plan, specifically the housing element. Item 5.3 is a presentation on the Civic Center proposal by Sheldon Development LLC. What started as a nine-month ENA has turned into a ridiculous three-year farce. Staff and council have repeatedly ignored the terms of the ENA in favor of Sheldon. The last extension was granted via illegal vote due to Brown Act violations during the closed session of the April 22nd, 2020 city council meeting. According to staff, Sheldon didn't pay the $15,000 deposit, which was due back in August of 2017 until March of this year. He still owed the city $22,4671, which he did not pay until April 30th, just to get that last extension. He was also supposed to pay another $15,000 deposit, but thus far I have no confirmation of that being paid. ENAs benefit the buyer, not the seller. The city could have been negotiating with qualified developers for a much better project and terms over the last three years, but honestly, I don't see any need to redevelop the Civic Center property right now. Staff will say this to help us meet the state-imposed housing requirements, but it is not the right development, it is not the right project, and it's not the right time. Sheldon has a poor reputation among local public agencies. He targets weak leaders of cash-strapped agencies and bribes his way in. Enough is enough, end this ENA and Civic Center project now. The special city council meeting on August 7, 2020 was a waste of taxpayer time and resources. The mayor called for a second meeting but had no intention of ever voting to place any tax measure on the ballot. I am disappointed at the vote, but I do think some good may come of it. Staff and council will be forced to take a hard look at the city's finances and make some needed changes now and over the next two years, which I spoke about at the last meeting. We cannot continue with the status quo. Sacrifices must be made by all, not just the taxpayers. Mayor Ta rudely interrupted me numerous times while I was speaking during oral communications at Friday's meeting, saying my time was up, when I clearly had 27 seconds left to speak. The city clerk tried several times to advise him I had time left, but he continued to talk over her, over me, and even raised his voice. This went on for 11 seconds until I finally raised my own voice to say my time was not up and for Mayor Ta to check the timer. Even after being corrected by the city clerk, the mayor did not apologize to me for his behavior. He was just upset because I outed him and Councilman Wen for their discussion about wanting pay raises, which they tried to publicly deny, even implying I was lying. The pay raise discussion did take place on Zoom before the closed session of the July 22nd city council meeting was called to order. At first, I thought they were joking, but then they asked City Attorney Jones to explain what the procedure was for them to get pay raises. City Attorney Jones explained that the allowable pay rates are related to the city's population and any changes are by ordinance voted on by the council. He also explained the limitations to the timing of any pay adjustments in relation to elections and terms. Although the discussion was supposedly not recorded, I opened my public comments before that closed session with a comment about what I'd heard and that I found it interesting, and that indeed was recorded. Councilman Wen, you asked for proof. If this isn't enough, perhaps you and Mayor Ta should ask City Attorney Jones about the conversation. Perhaps he can refresh your memory, or will you say he is lying as well? Talk about selective memory. The only good that came out of this is me knowing that you two do listen to my comments, albeit selectively. In closing, Mayor Ta, please do not ever rudely interrupt me again during oral comments. Let the city clerk do her job, and Mayor Ta and Councilman Wen, please do not ever publicly imply I am a liar again. Thank you.
Do we have any other speaker?
Yes, we do. So we also did receive a, I'm sorry, a request from Said Shah, so let me bring him up as well. We have other speakers as well. Said, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to just talk generally. First, I wanted to say what Anaheim did recently was great. They allocated 6.5 million to visit Anna businesses to come in, to show the great restaurants we have. We right now have very little communication with the outside cities, so something like that need to be done. They also allocated about half a million for the Chamber, which I think is good for them. Our Chamber is pretty much dead these days. The other thing I wanted to just generally state was, a city manager brings stability to the city. It took six months to get someone who was not qualified. You know, we need one urgently, and if Sherry is the one or this number-two guy that was best, let's get him in there and let's give him a long-term contract, so we can stabilize ourselves the best we can. And the last statement I have is, all businesses, like mine, you know, I had to lay off all 20 of my employees for three months. Wasn't easy, but we had to cut costs. The city needs to do the same. Let's not spend any more money on any project unless it is supported by grants or other ways. We need to tighten our belt, and we get the right people who are business-minded in key positions to help support the city, we can still make it, but I can tell you, with 40% of businesses that are expected to fail in Westminster, it does not look good at this point. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Jody Boyd. Jody?
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Jody. I'd like to go back to May 22nd, 2019, when the City of Westminster adopted a code of ethics in which the City Council affirmed the importance of having a city government that is fair, responsible, and honest. For the purpose of, item number three, is promoting and maintaining a culture of ethics in the city. The code goes on to touch upon responsibility, and under bullet item number two says, "I will seek to avoid taking actions which may cause the public to question my independent judgment." And fairness, bullet point number three says, "And to give the public the right to know," it really affirming that the public has the right to know, which goes into transparency. Under the section for honesty, bullet point number one proclaims, "I will be honest with other public officials, city staff, the public, and others." So my question is for Mayor Tretah. You recently made an appointment to the Traffic Commission. Now granted, there was only one applicant for the Traffic Commission, and that was Nan Kwan Wen. My question, at the time that you appointed Nan Kwan Wen to the Traffic Commission, why did you choose to not disclose to the public that he was and still is your direct neighbor right across the driveway? In fact, you both couldn't back your cars out of your respective garages without backing into each other. I feel that I and all the citizens of Westminster deserve a question to that, deserve an answer to my question. Second, I'm currently sending an email over to Erin and Sherry. I have identified another small reason for why our sales tax revenues have been decreasing, in this case, since October of 2019, and that is under the new law that implements the Marketplace Facilitators Act, which now considers eBay, Amazon, Etsy, and Walmart.com to actually be the sellers rather than the actual individuals or individual companies that are the sellers. Under this new law, eBay is collecting and submitting the sales tax. However, it is not being remitted back to the county and district where the seller is located. It is instead being remitted to the county and the district where the buyer is located. So for all of the businesses and individuals in Westminster that are selling online through these marketplaces, Westminster will no longer, and has not been since October 1st, receiving their portion of the sales tax. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is, well, last speaker is Adam Buttons, unless anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Hey, Adam? Adam Buttons?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, good evening. Adam Buttons, Westminster. You know, it's not easy to, you know, to address government officials and do it in a way that's, that's of, you know, being in good manners and trying not to be belligerent. I have sat back, and since September of last year, I have observed council meetings. I've observed council members, and I've also observed many people from the public that go up and talk in front of the council. And I'm astounded by the intellectual hubris of certain people that address the council and their lack of respect towards the rule of law and towards how to address and be respectful of certain council members. And I'm also appalled that, you know, certain people go up and speak and they can't say anything that's positive, and they never leave anybody in a positive space so that we can move forward to try to put the city in a better place. We are in a very, very strange time in our history of this country, dealing with a pandemic, COVID-19. And right now, more than anything, the government needs to be united, and seeing, you know, local politics and stuff, I still see political party fighting, which I've been told over and over that it's supposed to be a neutral situation. I'm also, you know, very disappointed that our council can't seem to put their minds together and take care of the citizens of Westminster. And now, because of certain decisions that were made by not passing the 1.5 sales tax, there are people at City Hall that are afraid they're going to lose their job, and basically layoffs are coming. And I just don't think that that is fair to the men and women that work for our police department and the men and women that work for the city, should have to lose their job because of people that cannot either make a decision or they make a decision and then they don't bother to explain why they made the decision that they made. And it's unfair to us, we the people, and we the people should not have to suffer for the negligence that's being done all around by everybody concerning. I put the blame on the people that constantly speak and complain and to the people that are running the city, the council. I've read all your resumes, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm astounded that with such great careers and credentials, you guys don't seem to make the adequate decisions that you would make in your professional lives when it's coming towards the City of Westminster. And we deserve better than that. And in your hearts, I know all of you feel that you're the good guys and you're doing what you're doing, but I don't feel anybody is really doing what it takes to fix the problems that we seriously have in this city. I see a lot of ego, ladies and gentlemen. Too much ego, not enough humility. And if you want to get something done, Dale Carnegie once said is "How to Win Friends and Influence People", and I think all of us would take heed to reviewing that book and reviewing those lessons that Dale Carnegie taught in the early 20th century. And I think that we would start the path of moving forward. So stop pointing fingers at our police department. Stop pointing fingers at the police department, stop pointing fingers at each other and start working with one another. If you have to go into a room and lock yourself up to do something for the benefit of this town, please do it. The fighting is getting old, and we the people are getting sick of it. Thank you so much.
Okay, next speaker is Donna Barr. Donna Barr? Donna Barr, can you hear us? You have your hand raised for our communications. Doesn't look like, does not look like she'd like to speak. So other than that, I have no additional speakers.
All right, so then I go oral communication, and then we have item 5.2, CARE Act Assistant Budget and Update on Local Testing in Response to the COVID-19 Pandemic.
Mr. Member, before we do that, could I clarify one thing from closed session? With respect to the question Mrs. Rains raised regarding the vote to extend the recruitment after the election, it was a motion by Mr. Nguyen and a second by Mrs. Ho with a 401 with Mr. Doe abstaining. With respect to the decision regarding the withdrawal of the offer to Mr. Chutai, that was unanimous consensus in the city council. Thank you.
All right, now go back to item 5.2, so may I have a staff report? I think this is a really good item. I really want to thank staff for working really hard on this item, so may I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Today, we have Robert Acosta with us. He is our emergency manager, and if you have any questions on this item, I know Councilmember Contreras has been advocating for testing in our city, and unfortunately, we've not been able to get the county on board with us on that, and so we did look into, you know, And so we did look into, you know, possibly bringing it to our city and found that it's, um, both costly and problematic and probably unlikely at this point. But, um, council, um, member Contreras, I know you had some questions, um, but we, and we do have, um, Robert Acosta here if you, if you'd like to address them.
By the way, uh,
Or is he, or are we just ask questions?
He's here to answer your questions. If you had any questions from the report.
I think, I mean, you and I spoke earlier today and I'm just, I just want to understand and maybe he could say it in a simpler way that maybe I'm just not understanding. But I think, you know, I think clearly we need testing, period. There's lack of testing and we're not a health agency, nor do we pretend to be. But our residents need access to testing. And it seems like we're not getting it. And then those who want it have to go through a maze to receive it. And so what I'm trying to do with this item and the intention of this is to try to find a way to provide testing for our residents here in Westminster. I know in Long Beach, they're done doing testing. I know in Los Angeles are doing testing. And it's, I mean, when you have residents again asking if they can go to LA to get tested because they can't get tested in their own county, there's a problem. So I'm just trying to see like, what is it? What can we do? And I know that you've been, been working on this diligently. I just, if you could explain and, you know, help us under, help me understand, why can't we do it?
I'm sure. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, well, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Robert Acosta. I'm the Emergency Services Coordinator for the City of Westminster. Prior to this position, I, uh, was the, uh, Division Chief. And so I know the city very well, I'm a staffer very well. And, um, and we, we really attacked this, um, in a way to hopefully come up with a positive result. Prior to the previous City Council meeting, I was tasked with, um, researching the feasibility of testing. And when we came to that previous meeting, we came up with three models, the Irvine model, the City of Carson model, and the Westminster model. That, um, you know, that report was delivered and after that, you, that we saw the cost and the expenditures and effort it would take. Councilman Contreras asked for us to take another look, a little more detailed look. And we focused on like-sized cities and, um, maybe other cities in Orange County to see if there was another model that we were missing. Well, since that last, uh, report, the dynamics of the testing field have changed, have changed, uh, pretty dramatically. And, um, it, before I go on any further, I just, I feel like there's a couple of key points that I'd like to make that I'd be remiss if I didn't bring to you because the changes are significant. For example, um, one key point is, um, and this is outside, uh, this is from the Public Health Department, that the supply for testing clearly outweighs the demand right now. A couple of examples of that is the super site that's up and running in Anaheim can process up to a thousand tests a day. And they're processing less than fifty percent, running about four to four hundred to five hundred a day. So, um, there's plenty of, um, plenty of ability to test people, but the interest isn't, isn't there. And that can be from anybody in the county can, can get those sites. Also, uh, one of the sites that we looked at was Irvine. And I just, prior to this meeting, I was able to talk to the Emergency Services Coordinator there in Irvine. And they're also seeing significantly less pressure, um, than they were seeing a month ago in terms of testing, um, testing requests or interest. They're seeing a cancellation rate that, um, equals to about four hundred cancellations a month. They are still on the hook for that, for those, the cancellations. And, um, except prior to that, I went to this meeting, I went on their website and I could tell you that for tomorrow, for tomorrow's test day, that they have seventy percent of their test slots available, are still available. So that again leads into the point that there are, are testing, there's, there's a surplus of testing and, and not really a demand to be tested, um, which is different than a month ago. The, uh, public-private partnership that, uh, Mr. Councilman Contreras asked me to take a look at, uh, we looked at that and the, um, the, due to some challenges with the labs processing in a timely manner, and I'm sure we've all heard that, um, that they're not doing PCR or serology testing and they're only doing the rapid tests. So that was, that's one that we were, we've been looking at and we're just coming up short on that. Um, so then we continued on and we researched other cities that may be running sites, um, in Orange County. And other than Irvine, there are no other cities that are running sites specifically for their residents. So there's, there is nothing to compare there. Now, when you talk about LA and Long Beach, that they can do it, that, that's correct. You know, they, they are doing it and, uh, quite honestly, so can we. But, but what's worth noting is, um, Mayor Garcetti recently said that their, their costs for testing in LA is about a million dollars a day. And they're in the hole for a hundred million dollars right now with no assurances that this money is going to be coming back from, from the CARES Act or FEMA. And that, that challenge or the reason they don't have that insurance is if you're, the CDC and the CDPH are only recommending symptomatic testing. So they're testing anybody. So they're most likely not going to be refunded from those, uh, FEMA or CARES but for testing people outside of the guidelines. So that's a significant hit that the city's going to be liable for. For Irvine, they've said it could be anywhere from five, ten, fifteen, or twenty-five percent of their total outlay, but which equates to up the, well over a hundred thousand dollars. So that's where the challenge is. It's not that we can't do it. It's just a question of, does this council want to be financially responsible for an undetermined amount of money that would likely be well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars? So, uh, does that answer your question?
I have a question. I'm not really sure that, uh, whether our city, our city manager could respond or, or Mr. Acosta could like to, uh, uh, respond. I heard, uh, a few CBS, Rite Aid and Waring Store around, uh, providing a free test. Am I right? I heard about that and at least in Huntington Beach, two CBS are providing test site. Is anywhere that our city manager look into it? And if they, if they do, uh, can we, um, inform our resident?
Yes, you can. I've heard that as well, that CBS and I believe Rite Aid as well is, is doing some free testing. Um, there is, there are testing sites available throughout, um, throughout the county. Um, I, I can definitely put more stuff like that on our website. And it is on the, it is on the county's website as well, I believe.
And another question that relay, uh, CARE Act Assistant, uh, a few, uh, meeting ago, I think, I'm not sure whether or not last meeting or, or a meeting last month, I asked our interim city manager that he say the word that we can utilize the federal funding for masks. So how is the process?
So we have been using, we have been, uh, giving out masks. I don't know if Diana Dobbert is on the line. Um, so our community services has been passing out masks to people. Um, I know when we deliver meals and we also do it. So yes, we are, we are making masks available to our public.
I appreciate it.
At your request.
Okay.
So I just want to go back to, you know, the comment that was made earlier about the, the need not being there, the, I, I disagree. I think, again, I've talked in red, spoken with residents and to get a test, it's literally an exercise in, in, I, I, I drill. I mean, you have to call around, wait for an appointment. It's just, it's just a really difficult, uh, process. It claims to be simple, but it's clearly not. And, you know, you need to be symptomatic and you have to, there's just so many, you know, hurdles that an average person in the city that's just looking to be tested if they're concerned, has to go through. So, you know, I disagree and, and two, you know, half that stuff isn't even in multiple languages and people don't even know it's even available. I just think it's tragic that we're, that we're as cities, you know, even do, you know, challenged with this, you know, trying to find solutions because, you know, we're, we're being let down. So it's just really unfortunate. And fortunately, we don't have the money to put out there and, and, and I guess, and, and hope that we'll get reimbursed because it doesn't sound like there's a commit concrete reimbursement rate of any kind other than a possibility that I think, I mean, we can't afford. So I, I, I think it's just really tragic. And so if, at the very least, if we can work and find out, Mayor Tom mentioned some locations, if we can put together, you know, some, uh, locations that are nearby. But again, I just know it's a, it's a process. You have to go to get a, go see your doctor, get a doctor's note, then make it, then you call. And it is the really confusing process for a lot of residents. It's clearly not convenient and it's unfortunate that we're, we're stuck where we're at today.
Vice Mayor Ho? Anything?
You know, there's a place on Beach Boulevard, um, a medical center on Beach and Edinger. Um, if you go south, it's on the right-hand side. And I see, uh, a, a couple of testing centers. And one in particular I'm thinking of is right at that medical, uh, office. And that's Westminster. So I'd like to see if staff could check that out and put together a list of, um, maybe call them and see, do you need a doctor's note or what, what is the cost? And make that available for people. So that would, that's one place that's really near me, right on Beach Boulevard, uh, end of four or five.
Chief Acosta, what is the process to get tested? Don't you need to get, jump through a number of hurdles to get there? You can't just simply drive through.
Well, the, um, to, anybody that's, uh, that is distributing the test or conducting the test, you, you don't want to do it for free, right? And to have even the hope of being reimbursed, you do need to provide information. And that information is, uh, is a guideline that's provided, not internally, but from the CDC. So to meet the CDC guidelines for uses, like for example, of contact tracing and being able to determine, um, you know, the prevalence in any one neighborhood or any one area, they, they require that. And that's one of the minimum requirements to, to, um, to, to be able, and, and you have to meet the, the, the guidelines. But those requirements of reporting all your information, it's, uh, mandatory if we're going to apply for any type of reimbursement. So it's just, um, uh, that part of the system, there's really no workaround. That's not, that's not an internal thing where there was, people are asking what the symptoms are, what, were you out of the country or were you exposed, um, to somebody? Or do you think you're exposed to somebody? All those questions are coming right, right out of the federal playbook.
Tragedy.
Yeah, I, I agree. It would be nice if we could just have a drive-up where we, you could do it almost anonymously. But if you do that, you're ensuring the fact that you will not recoup any funds.
So I'd like to recommend our interim, uh, city manager come up with a list of all location, uh, surrounding our city that are providing, uh, testing free. So our resident could able to, uh, be informed and, uh, participate in that testing. So that in lieu in, in my motion that I like to, uh, I like, I like to move as recommended, to approve.
I, I have a question real quick.
Please.
Um, so all those testing center is either in Orange County, LA or, or Long Beach. What is the requirement for the people to be tested? Do they have to be the resident in that particular county or city? And if we have one in our city, are we gonna accept resident who is not a Westminster resident?
Well, I think the, the marching, the, the, um, the, the parameters that were set up, if we're to set one up in Westminster was just for the Westminster residents. So, um, as, as we researched it, it was just specifically for, for our residents. And then, um, like, like I said earlier, I think it might've been a staff report too, is, is once we step outside those guidelines and we start testing asymptomatic patients, then, then we're, um, then we're really hoping that we'll get, um, reimbursement through, through either CARES or FEMA. But again, I just don't, I just don't see him, I don't see it being likely that, that we'll achieve reimbursement for the asymptomatic patients.
Okay, but my question is, what about other, um, center, testing center? Do they take people out of the, do they have, do they have perimeter? Where do you have to live in, in a certain area of the county for you to be tested? Or, or take anybody? Does anybody?
Yeah, I apologize, I can't, uh, for interrupting you there, but, um, I thought you were done. Uh, so anecdotally, I, I, I can tell you that you have to live in Long Beach, um, from some people that, some employees that I know that have testing done in Long Beach and they said you had to live there. I don't know that officially. And in LA County, you have to be an LA County resident to, uh, to receive testing there.
What about Orange County?
In Orange County at our super sites, for, for example, like in Anaheim and then those soon to be opened, um, uh, in Costa Mesa at the fairgrounds. Anybody in Orange County can make an appointment and show up and receive a free test. And those tests, there's plenty of appointments available. They're running, um, like I said, they have a capacity of about a thousand a day and they're conducting about four hundred a day. So there's, you know, anywhere from sixty to fifty percent of their appointments are, are available every day.
But they don't mention the work they have to go through to get that appointment.
Thank you.
They don't mention all, all the hurdles you need to climb.
Well, that's, that's going to be, that, that, those steps that you have to take to, to make an appointment are consistent with every test site that I researched, LA, Long Beach, Anaheim, Irvine, and, um, even in the, uh, Westminster Mall, you have to provide information for them.
All right, so do we, uh, have any other council member input or comment? If not, there is a motion on the floor.
Again.
So the motion on the floor that I, um, move as recommended and, uh, I asked our interim city manager to come up with a list of location, uh, surrounding our city that providing free testing, right?
I second.
Okay.
So there was actually a motion made by, um, Mayor Ta and then seconded by Councilmember Contreras.
What? Okay.
That's what I had, yeah. Just to clear, just to clarify the maker and the second.
All right.
Okay, so, um, so Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
carries five to zero.
Now we go back, Concern Calendar or matter listener, the Concern Calendar, I consider routine, maybe provide, maybe approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless member of the City Council or staff request a specific items be removed from the Concern Calendar for separate action or discussion.
I moved to approve.
Second.
Made by Vice Mayor Ho, by Mayor Ta to move the Concern Calendar. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Carried five to zero.
Next, we have regular basis, item five point one, a work contract for Mendez to build Monument Park project. You see, I think really, really good, uh, project for our city. I really want to thank our, our staff for, uh, working really hard for the last few years, come up with, uh, I think, is that a state fund?
This is Grant Leonard. Yes, can, can I have Adolfo Zeta just give you, just a quick update on this project if you don't mind?
Please, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Adolfo Zeta. I'm the assistant to the city manager and, uh, transportation manager for the city. Uh, just a few points that I wanted to, um, uh, I wanted everybody to, to know. We're very appreciative to the City Council for directing us to pursue grant funding to, uh, make this project a reality. We went out and we sought, uh, funding through the State of California Parks Grant Program. We had, we obtained one point three million dollars from them. Um, at this point, we have more than enough money to deliver the project as it was, um, really a vision, uh, from Sylvia Mendez and her committee, as well as educators from our city, a student group from our city, council participation and also, um, outreach meetings at the senior center. We even worked with, um, our historical society in Westminster to, to bring this whole project forward. And of course, I can't, um, forget to mention Jeff Hittenberg, the Orange County Department of Education and their work. So the park project was funded. Um, typically grant funds require that a city provide a match. Typically, grant funds require that a city provide a match, right? So usually there's like an 80% grant, 20% match. This project is 100% funded by the state of California. It's a project that they are very excited to put their name on. It's a project that when completed will have not just deliver a park, it's really going to be an outdoor museum for our residents and students. There will be educational content and even technology that's never been seen in a park in the form of augmented reality, which essentially just means that you can utilize your eye, your your smartphone to access information about the American experience, really not just the Sylvia Mendez portion of of history, but also civil rights, the civil rights movement in our in our city's history. We're very proud to bring this project forward to the city council. You have already awarded the art component a few meetings ago. Tonight's item would be awarding the construction component, which is $683,000. The Casa Corporation as the as the lowest bid. This was a publicly bid project. And we we obtained a lot of great interest. We have quite a bit of people who provided bids. It was a total of six. And Casa Construction, we've worked with before and they have a very good reputation for delivering high quality products. So and that pretty much covers it. I think that the biggest takeaway here was thank you very much for your support and we were able to go out and do exactly what you asked us to do, which is obtain grant funding from the state of California and we're ready to deliver the project very soon at this point. Thank you.
I I agree with Mayor Ta. So with that, I moved to approve this item.
Second.
Five point one.
Alright, we have the motion made by council member Wayne and second by council member from Taurus, move as recommended.
Yes, Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Hey, and to read into the record, that motion carried five to zero. It's to approve the award of contract to the lowest and responsive bidder in the amount of $683,744.25 to Casa Construction and that all other bids be rejected, authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of $68,374.43 for potential change orders and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Next item five point three, presentation on civic center proposal from Sheldon Development MFC.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you very much. My name is Alexis Middle, Community Development Director. Tonight, we have a presentation from Sheldon Development. They were the developer that the city council entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with in 2017. The purpose of the grant was to examine potential re-envisionment of the civic center greater area to discuss whether or not we can achieve our vision that's outlined in the general plan of a mixed use walkable environment and explore options. So with no further ado, I would like to turn it over to the developer Steve Sheldon, who is here to present to you tonight some concepts.
At this time, I'm actually going to move Mr. Sheldon into our panelists view. Give me just one second. Hi, Steve, are you with us? Let's unmute him.
See his his name on the screen, but.
Yeah. Hi, hi, Steve.
There you go. Okay.
All right.
Okay, start. Hopefully I can get this correct.
Just make sure you hit share screen. You'll be able to share your screen with the rest of us.
Yep, and I'm gonna have to switch off to another PowerPoint because I they were they were unable to go on two on one, so I'll have two now I can I can do that fairly fairly seamlessly. Okay, so we're there. I'm going to go to slideshow. And there we are, better?
Yep, looks good. All right, you're ready.
I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor and Council. We've we've definitely worked hard and have had our starts and our stops here and I'm very happy to be be here tonight to make this presentation. So I will, this is our our first slide and our next one I wanted to go over was just a history, I think, of of the civic center of construction. I think that gives some some context here. And so the buildings that that encompass the city hall, the council chamber, the community senior center and the courthouses were all constructed in the 60s with those 1960 building standards. The county library, which was was constructed in 1975, it's on city owned land that's leased to the county. That comes up in about four years, at least. The warmer was constructed 2003, 2006, the Rose Center, 2006, Orange Coast College, the police headquarters, 2011, 2012, the structure. And then the city then started doing some planning work. And once they once the police headquarters was built and they hired a consultant to look at the current city hall building to analyze how that building could be replaced or how or what what were the needs there, the square feet, and they and they they took a look at that. In 2016, the city hired another consultant to analyze moving city hall into the single story section of the police department. I have some further some further information and some of those floor plans to show that. In the 2016, also, the city approved the general plan that contemplated development in the civic center and also sale of city land to construct new city buildings. As was standing, there was a RFQ to select the devote devote partner. And the city had four bidders and Sheldon was selected. I believe we had definitely the best proposal with I had been monitoring and working on this property for at least 10 years and knew it very well. And and I'm but I still continue to learn new things every day. Our task included site planning, conceptual building design, architecture, the concepts for to activate the ball. I think part of it is important concept is activating, bringing more people down to the to the civic mall, to the civic center and having more vitality and how you do that. There's different activators to do that. And of course, all the costs today have been paid by Sheldon Development. And and we do pay our invoices on time when when we receive them. And with there's been so the zero cost to the taxpayers. This is the Civic Center District, which is greater than just the Civic Center area. This is what the general plan had is Civic Center District. It's 100 acres and it's made up with with, you know, just above Westminster Boulevard. And then there's newly that comes down and then it comes up up Beach Boulevard. That's 100 acres. That's overall Civic Center District. So when you hear about that the city wants a mixed use development or see what's mixed use in their Civic Center District, they're talking about putting, you know, they have residential here and retails here and there's office buildings over here and the courthouse. So the district itself as a whole has different uses along with it. There's no use in any particular, all the uses aren't in any particular area. These are spread out within the district. The 2006 general plan had many, many meetings and it's important to take to note that there was a general plan advisory committee, city staff, planning commission and city council. And the general plan, as I stated, does contemplate a new civic center to serve the residents and attract new new commercial businesses to to the city. And new residential uses will further activate the Civic Center area, which ensure attracts more residences to utilize the Civic Center area. It makes the city city asset and amenity desirable by many. The another section from the general plan, and I need to scooch over something for a second. Pictures were there. This is from taken from the general plan and I'll read the first sentence here that's that we have yellowed. Introducing new residences in this area would provide additional foot traffic and vitality in the evening. So that was from the general plan advisory committee and the staff and the commission and the council when they approved it. And then it further says, the city can explore ways to consolidate municipal functions and make more land available for development. The city's ownership of land in this area opens the door for potential public private partnerships. Leveraging those land holdings could reduce could reduce or eliminate the need for public investment in public realm improvements, meaning that the city would not have to pay for a new city building that it would be paid for as a part of the process. The area that we're talking about is within the greater 100 acre 100 acre civic district is the area right here, which is 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 encompassed by Westminster Boulevard, All American Way, 13th Street. And then that's not as well, it comes up here to the Jackson. I'm sorry, I have to I have to keep moving this. These pictures keep bouncing around and on my room trying to talk. I apologize. On my on my zoom. I think what's important here is just to come with that this that when we did all the site observations, you know, this was this was part of an earlier 89 page large presentation that we made to the council, that the civic center does suffer from a lack of activity throughout the day. And that there more could be done to activate and bring vitality to the to the greater Civic Center area, which is part of our plan. You know, I think the site suggestions are to create activators that will bring people out of their home, down to the civic center. And there's very and there's many ways to do that. One way is having this kind of pop up restaurants. Another way is having the sort of shared use of books. Another way, I sorry, I'll continue here, is the the various, you know, the kiosks that are available and more activities that will bring people out to the civic center. I'm going to skip that picture. This is the kind of community at at activation. And here is that that area in between the courthouse and the police police station that we're going to propose to re-landscape and take out the concrete. And these are just suggestions of movies in the park that you're already doing and in ways that you can bring more residents out to enjoy this great asset that that you have. I want to mention, you know, in the in my travels here, there have been some questions raised. I thought I'd answer them here about taxes being increased or where would the money come? And so again, just to state for the council and the staff and those that are watching and participating, the the city taxes are not will not increase for this project. The cost for the development come from developer fees. They come from monies developers paying for the land. They come from grants and there are other other proceeds for the source. Another big question is why is city hall being rebuilt? Nothing is wrong with this with the current building and it appears to be a great building and it's in a period. It is functional inside and has been remodeled. It was constructed in 1968 and the California Building Code was updated in 1971 because of the severe damage from the Samar earthquake. That earthquake killed 64 people. I was in that earthquake. I lived in San Fernando Valley. I remember it. It was 12 seconds long, a 6.5 quake that cost $500 million in damage. And those dollars are probably billions in in today's dollars. So there has been, you know, nice cosmetic interior remodeled to the civic center, to the city hall, but it doesn't have fire sprinklers. It has seismic deficiencies, which could result in the building being unusable and a potential risk to the employees and visiting public. In addition, there's a need for new roofing and air conditioning systems to operate more efficiently. Another concern that we've shown is are are we losing open space and the sun can garden? And so, no. First, we're not the second garden will be will be relocated over just just maybe 25 feet. And there will be more open space. Essentially, the asphalt parking lots and concrete will be replaced with natural landscape and meandering paths. So now I'm going to attempt to change to the next power. So please momentarily give me give me a moment here. Okay, I did that correctly. So now I'm going to talk about, you know, more detail about the project. And in 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 doing this in the past 90 days, we've met, we've had Zoom meetings with staff members in our team, probably three or four of those, and included in those were some comments, some comments in direction from the city staff. And first was to implement the vision of the general plan. And I've shared that with you. And I think this plan definitely does have that connectivity and definitely does bring apart the thought of of the general plan to have a mixed use live work type community. We were asked to increase the density to help with the regional housing need assessment and to look at affordable housing. And so we did, we did that. And there are in addition to the housing that's going to be market rate, which is very very needed and desired, there will be 15 for sale affordable homes as a part of the project. We were we said, we were told the city has a park deficiency, need more open space. So we looked at that and were able to add more real usable open space that I see is more kind of a passive open space that would be not where you go and kick a soccer ball and and do those things where you just have more calm and walking enjoyment of all of all the grounds there. But again, at the end of the day, that ends up to that is up to the city and how you want to program your open space. The site functionality and connectivity, it definitely has functionality and connectivity as to the as to the civic center city hall area. You'll see all the different paths and and ways that that we've done that. And then lastly, staff asked us to investigate the Westminster Police Department building and how that might work. And so we took a look at the plans that the city had commissioned in 2016, the floor plans, and I'll share those with you on how that could be a part of an of a new one aspect of a new city hall building with minimal effect upon the police department, certainly subject to the police department and the police chiefs, you know, advice and thoughts on that. This is the first. I guess, I'm having a problem. Oh, boy, hold on for a second, please. I have a technical difficulty. Okay. I have a problem here. Going down to our next slide. Here, I know what I want to do. Forget about that. Okay. There we go. Now, I I do apologize for that. It's my first time doing a Zoom presentation. So this is the site plan that would involve having the city hall up here on Westminster Boulevard that would share a a community plaza area with the senior and senior community center building. And I I envision having the council chamber on the ground floor right around here. And right here, you've got a nice brick wall that might might stay or we might put something else there. And here is a is a large meeting room and room that the seat that that is available as a part of the community services department that we get that we can try to open up and have some connectivity between the two. It does give great visibility to the city here. We have parking that we provided all in here and there's open space there. And here, we thought about moving the clock tower from here over to the front to make it more visible to the traveling public. We have open space over here that we that would be however the city wants to do that. And then we have the second garden that is replaced here. Then this is also the the replacement of all of the large concrete walkways that that are that are there in the middle of the mall area while maintaining the 10 foot wide walkways on either side. And there's many benefits to 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 this concept. Let me share a picture. Just to give a little perspective, that's what one idea is certainly not in any way cast in in stone. It's just one thought of what a city hall could look like off of Westminster Boulevard and you'd have the senior center over here. I'll go back again and show the the building that would be facing out. This building is 22,500 square feet. And I'll next go into the more of the details on the building. Here are here's the site cost programming and revenue a static type type performer. And we have subject to we are working with staff. This is what we've taken from the the work that was done previous on programming the city hall building that I referenced earlier. And we would have the planning department, the building department on the ground floor and the council chamber on the ground floor, of course, with the youth and family center. And I'm proposing suggesting that the council chamber be non fixed seating so that it can be programmed all day and evenings and it can it can work with the youth center to add more usable square feet because when you have fixed seating, you know, the those that section of the building is really utilized. You know, every other Tuesday and then for for you know, the, those, that section of the building is really utilized, you know, every other Tuesday and then for, for commission meetings and such. And so we think there's a way to have a very nice chamber, but also make it more usable and, and have it programmed a lot more. And then you'd have the additional administrative offices on the second floor for total of 22,500. The revenue to pay for this building would come from 8.5 million from the purchase of land and that's an estimate and that would need to be validated with an appraisal. And then the, we would also advance 3.5 million dollars, which would be necessary for the construction. We'd be paid back that through the community facilities district and our impact fees. And then coastline would contribute $5 million toward their use of the parking structure. And then we anticipate grants and other, other items for a million dollars for a total of approximately 17 million dollars. That's the rep, that's, that's the revenue. And then the cost to build the building, the total of that is 16 million in 170, $170,000. And we came to this number, first we hired a consultant to analyze the site construction costs of demoing the buildings of grading, of doing the parking lots, putting in the landscaping, all those things to kind of bring it to a finished, a, a finished pad ready for construction. And that the consultant, they do that professionally. We're confident in their numbers that they gave us. We brought in another consultant who was very involved in construction of the police department. And he surveyed about 10 new or relatively new built city and special district buildings. And we compared the cost of that construction. And we believe the numbers that we have come up with, it's about $700 a foot, $700 a foot all in. And with our, with the 10% contingency, we're still a little less than a million dollars under the revenue. So we're confident that this city hall that I showed on the Westminster can be built for the performer that, that we have here now. To the next slide. This is a site plan B that shows a city hall building right down here next to the police station. I think it might be helpful just to go down and show the picture right here to give you some context before I go into everything. That would be adjacent to the police station on that's the, to the single story. This building is 15,000 square feet. And it would be in addition to the 10,000 square feet that would be utilized in the police department building there in that single story, single story section. There is a generator here that we budget money to relocate. So I'll go back up here to the site plan. You see parking here that will need to work on to make sure that's sufficient for the community and the senior center. We have about 90,000 square feet of open space. And that's 2.2 acres of land available. And we think that's just, that's great. And then that comes through here, you can see the DG trail and meanders through passive open space and you know, California low water use type landscaping comes through and then it comes down here to this, to the area down here. And we left that just green. Where the city can, you know, whether you, how you want to activate that land, what you want to put on it, we'll leave that up to your, your ideas and thoughts. And so we just thought we would leave that blank, but we want to show the connectivity and how the area all works together. And how that was considered. So this is, so coming back here, this is the 10,000 square foot parcel that part, part of the police station that is the single story on the very end. The entrance to the police is right here. And whether, whether you would continue to use that, or whether you create a new entrance right here on the back part, because there is a door right here now for the entrance to this section of the building. And this is smaller because this is two story and this is one story to, 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 to show that. We significantly adds a great usable passive and open space to the city. So I've gone through that. Here's just another example of what it could look like, just, just to give context. Certainly that's not the end city hall though. This is what the consulting firm came up with back in 2016. This is the main entrance to the city hall right here, to the police department right here, I apologize. And it, you come in and this is the section that is the 10,000 square feet. It is relatively underutilized when I was through there. These two areas here and here will need to be relocated to other parts of the police department, which the study said was feasible. And so I will show now this is what you get after you, after they've been relocated. All of this would be in the pink here, or that color would be the part of the city hall building. And the 15,000 square foot section would be over here. And this part here would be utilized. You can see, see all the offices here, all the workstations and this is the large emergency conference room, I believe that would be available as well. So whether the entrance is here or here or some other place or, or connected some other way, that's certainly subject to further discussions. This is the performing costs to build, to, to build the 15,000 square feet and to put in the FFNE into the 10,000 square feet. So I would go, go back up here to show the 10,000 square feet in the existing building, 15,000 square feet into the new building. And you know, this is can be subject to what is the pleasure of the council and the city of how you want to program that I came, came up with some suggestions on that. But that's certainly, you know, for, for our discussion. The revenue, I covered that earlier and it's the same revenue amount. I can cover that again. It's 8.5 million dollars payment. The 3.5 approximately as the advancing the funds. The five million for the parking from coastline, the million dollars in grants and even potential naming rights. And I think the million dollars could go up. If, if we, if a good, you know, program was put together to secure those monies. The total for the cost is 13,000, 690, 13,695, I apologize. Here in the bottom, just, just to come down to the bottom. And that is significantly less than the, the revenue. And so there could be $3 million that would be available to the city, city general fund that would be extra, you know, monies available to the city from the, from the project. We have broken down all the costs, I can go through those again regarding the, and the sequence of the planning. The relocation of the generator right here, the soft costs, the, the site development, the furnishings fixtures and equipment, the construction costs, the contingency, and then we come up with this final dollar amount. So we feel very, very comfortable about the cost here and, and can, you know, I guess answer questions on that when we're concluded. So if I could just go now, maybe kind of as I'm finishing up on the benefits of this, is that the zero cost to the taxpayers. This, a purpose-built city hall for the residents and a youth and family center. 3.5 acres of open space for residents that replaces the asphalt, the concrete for green space. Updated civic center with a, with a modern look. It activates the civic center, attracting more residents to enjoy the peaceful amenities. Provides the open space connectivity within the civic center. Provides 100 new for sale townhomes, including 15 affordable homes. It, it replaces the buildings that were constructed pre-1978 building standards. Includes the second garden. Uses land, land that is generally underutilized by city residents. And it implements Westminster's general plan vision. So the time, so we have been on timeline and I would like to accelerate the timeline. This is where we're at right now as to confirming the, the costs and the, the planning and those things. And then we, we would say in 69 days, we'd want to work with, work on putting together a, an agreement with the city. And then come back, come back and during that time period, continue to work with the council and, and staff and residents to take this, these, these draft numbers and answer questions and, you know, make changes as they come up. We didn't enter into an agreement. And then after that, we would then start the entitlement process, the secret process, which would involve a tremendous amount of public outreach. Because once we have the plan nailed down, then we can do the public outreach. It's very difficult to go and talk to the community when you don't have the plan nailed down. We, we believe, you know, if we can act in expeditious manner, that could be accomplished by April 2021. At that point, we would have the approvals. We would then start the construction drawings that would take probably through January 2022, where we, where construction could commence on the project. And then in, in May of 2023, June 2023, we estimate that the building would be all, all completed. So thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon, for your nice presentation, member of the city council. Do you have any question or concerns for Mr. Sheldon?
I have a number of questions. Quite some times since you've been putting this together. So pardon me if I want to need your help kind of refreshing my memory on some of these items you played for us today. My first question is, how much are you paying for the land again? Seems rather low and I want to know how you came up with that number.
We came up with at $2 million per acre. And I believe that when you praise it, it will appraise for less than that amount. The city did an appraisal in 2015, I believe, of the two acre juror parking lot on 13th street. And that appraisal for those two acres came back at 1.3, 1.5 million dollars or $750,000 per acre. And so I don't think that we've had that much appreciation in land value. So we, we believe the 2 million is a good, fair market price of, of land at this stage of, of what is going on.
Well, let's make it clear, the city will have to go through an appraisal process, absolutely determine value. Agreed.
What was that again?
The city will have to go through an appraisal process to objectively determine the land value. That's going to happen.
We still have to do the process. So just because we did it five years ago, we can't just assume that it didn't go up. But we have to definitely do another appraisal. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we do do that because five years ago is a long time, you know, a lot can happen in, you know, one year. Five is a long time. So that's question number one. So there, there will be another appraisal process we'll, we'll look at in terms of how much, you know, if we're really speaking apples to apples. Thank you. The second question is, did you, did coastline commit to this project?
They committed to the 5 million three or four, four or five months ago. And then with COVID, they like got a little pulled back because they, they don't know what's going on. And they, they do have $3 million in their bond funds. I, I got that from Vice President Christine Nguyen from Coastline. They have 3 million there and that gets them close to the mark. And so they, they would like to have their own parking. They would prefer surface parking. They understand the structure is what was available. So we've had multiple meetings and phone calls, conversations with, with coastline on this.
But my question is, did they commit?
They did commit four or five, they did commit pre-COVID. And
Have they committed recently?
Well,
I would think you want to get that commitment before we went forward, you know, we're not just going to take their work for it.
I think coastline would prefer that nothing happened and that they continue to use the surface parking lot. So that would be, that's what they would like. But I don't think that's necessarily what the city would like. So we are in active conversations with them. Even today. And so I think they recognize that they'll need to do something. They prefer to keep it to the status quo. They've had that for, they've basically used the parking lot for the past 14 years. And if nothing happens, they'll use it for another 14 years. So, but we're, we believe confident that as we continue to spend our own money and go forward with this, that, that they will step up, you know, they've spent, they, they just did, they just did a sailing school in, it's under construction in Newport Beach. It's a beautiful project. They paid over $22 million for a 10,000 square foot building. And so I, I think they could certainly be able to, you know, pay their fair market value for, for their parking.
I want to go back to my original question. Did they commit?
They committed pre-COVID, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, council member. And they, they said, hey, we, we, what's like everyone else, what's going on? But I, they're committed to being involved and it's part of the process to have them involved. That's part of our timeline is to, as we, you know, concurrently work together to have a contract with them.
Yeah, I'm just confused. They either committed or they didn't commit, you know, I, I don't know.
They did commit.
What exactly are they committing to?
They committed to $5 million to buy into parking rights in the parking structure for their students. Now there's details to be worked out. That's what they committed to.
So it's just parking spaces are committing to, correct?
I'm sorry?
So this is the parking spaces are committing to. Is that correct?
Committing to have the right to park, yes.
So do, do they have to go through this project to, to commit to this agreement?
I don't know.
Oh, we could do it without the project.
I don't follow your question. I'm sorry, council member.
So so coastline is actually trying to buy parking spaces, correct?
They're not trying to, they, what that's been offered is to, is to buy parking spaces in the structure.
Right, but they, we could do it without this project. We could tomorrow ask them if they want to buy into the parking structure, correct?
Correct. You could, you could ask them. And they would prefer to, to park on the surface parking lot with, with the arrangement they have now.
Just out of clarification, they haven't, so they haven't committed, nothing in writing. There was a conversation pre-COVID, but up until today, there's no solid commitment.
I memorialized our conversation with a letter back to Vice President Nguyen and had emails with her on that. So I feel they, you know, these are interesting times right now and I'm comfortable that, that they will be involved and, and, and be committed.
You're comfortable, but are they comfortable?
They would prefer to use the surface parking lot. So that's part of the negotiation process with, with another governmental entity. And you know, if they sense different things, so I'm just, that's the, that's the process.
Yeah, I just want to get clarity because it, it sounds, you know, I just want to make sure because I know that they're not really excited about it from the conversations I've heard.
They're not. They would prefer to, they, they like the status quo and that works for them, but
I just find it strange that they would commit three, four, three, $5 million when they, when, when they haven't. They like what they have. So the next question would be
Going to go away, they're going to have to find, they have no, they have zero parking spaces. So they're going to have to find a place to park. And so if they understand that it's inevitable that this land is going away, then they step up and then they participate.
All right. My next question is, you know, I was part of the active, the plan on the general plan update. So I just, I do, I remember we wanted to activate the area, make it a sort of a dining, you know, mixed use project. I, I don't, I'm not sure how condos, I mean, really are part of that vision. How do you intend to really attract the community and commerce to this site with your project?
Well, the general plan did say introducing residents, residences into this exact area would bring more activity during the evening. You know, and if you, I, I've been there in the evening, you know, weekends on the evening, I see a lot of seniors that are, that are walking at night. And I think we want to bring more people there that will do that. And when activity creates activity. So this is one element of that activating the area. The other element is making it more appealing for people to come out. And they make their consumers and they, they make choices of where they want to spend their social time. And so there needs to be, we, what, that's what we brought up, the different ways to activate and to bring people out to the civic center. Yeah, it doesn't just happen by
The conversations that Mayor Todd and I had with the committee, I just don't remember it just being condos. I thought it was a mixed use project. Just lastly, you know, the NA had a outreach, community outreach. I know you shared some renderings with us, you know, how much of it is part of community input and how is it incorporated as part of this project?
We had done We had done extensive outreach already and had three meetings in the, with the community. We mailed invitations to approximately twenty thousand households, I believe. And we got about, there's about two hundred or three hundred people in total that participated in in the three meetings. And we received input that way and have just received input through our travels.
All right. Well, thanks so much for your time.
All right. Any other, any other question from the member of the city council, please?
Yes, yes, I do have a question. Mr. Sheldon, thank you very much for the great presentation. And I want to answer, I thank you for all the answers. However, I do have one question for you. Earlier at this meeting, there was a comment saying that you still own old the City of Westminster in term of financial. And in your presentation, I heard conflicting information, which you said that you pay every bill on invoice in time. So can you clarify that again for us so that we know, you know, we we have this story straight here?
I think initially, after about a year into the project, we've been on hold, we've been put on hold by staff for about seven months. Initially, but then we were working on it. There was a consultant that did some work in that we, that was part of what the staff wanted to see. We never got the invoice for that work, and I apologize, I didn't get it. I think staff honestly just didn't get sent. And it was an oversight. And then when it was brought to our attention, we paid it immediately. And then we paid back, I think, another invoice, and then we were asked to pay fifteen thousand dollars for any additional costs, which we paid at the same time. And I am, so all, everything, so everything in the back has been paid, and the monies that were put in deposit for future expenses, those were absolutely paid as well.
So at this point here, I would say that you just, from what you said, you don't owe any money, outstanding money, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think the city is holding on to some of our money right now.
All right, okay, thank you.
I have, I have some questions.
Please.
What is fair market value for per acre right now in the city of in the area, in the vicinity of the city hall right?
It depends what you can put on it. And I don't want to not answer your question, council member. So if you're selling land for commercial and it's really retail, retail is not doing very, very well, and I don't think folks are going to, you know, at this point want to buy land to build a retail building when there's so much empty retail. If you're selling land and it has, it's all, it's all approved, and the permits are there, and it's shovel ready, you know, it's 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 worth more than if someone has to go through all the entitlement process and take it through the, in it's in by, you know, adding, changing zoning and doing the entitlements. We looked at other acquisitions in cities of land, and two million dollars was the price that we had saw in other jurisdictions that are nearby.
Okay, that was a, you know, when you answered the question to the council, Councilman Contreras, you say that's a this offer about was established about approximately five years ago, that correct? And it hasn't been reappraised in term of, you know, what is a fair market value for this particular piece of property per acre? Is that fair statement?
It's fair to say, and I was, yes, and my reason for bringing it up was to say that that number was so low on its appraisal value, I certainly, certainly it's worth much more than that today. I, and I didn't mean to imply that it was not worth it. I did, that was not my intent. And it would, and we put in our proposal, in our presentation that it would need to be, go through a fair, fair market appraisal. We understand that, and that was one of, one of the sentences there in the document that I'd be happy to point out to you. So I certainly agree with what the city attorney said, that there, that there have to be a fair market appraisal.
And you are committed to move this project forward?
Absolutely.
And what does it take for you to move this project forward?
For you to vote, yes. For it, what it takes is, I mean, there's a process, and so I think the next step of the process is that we would work with the city to identify where you want to have the city hall building. That's between, that's the city council to talk among, you know, what you want and how those sort of things. And here, and if there's another suggestion, we're happy to look at it. We've done dozens of site plans. And what we happy to look at, if 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 there, other than what we've shown now. And once you determine that, and then we can determine the land that would be for the residential, we we can then, we then are able to delineate that. We know how many square feet we have. Then we can enter into a larger development and disposition agreement that would lay out the process of going through the entitlements and who does what, what the scope of responsibility is, and all those sorts. That'd be the next step. That would probably take about ninety days. We'll bring that back. And then you would have another vote to decide if you want to go forward. And after that vote, we would do all the entitlements and and pay for all the consultants at our risk and everything. You'd have another vote to, a final vote to decide if you want to prove the entitlements. And that, and after that, then, then we do go forward with with what we have, what we have put together.
Well, my concern is, you know, we're possibly going to enter a recession, so if the majority of the city council agree to move forward with this project, maybe, you know, city attorney can address the issues, any way that we can guarantee that this process is going to go either ways, that the city gonna, not going to get caught right in the middle of something half done.
Well, that's a, that's a fair question. We, we're going to spend all the money. We want to go as fast as possible. In fact, Adolfo can tell you that back when we started, we paid for a traffic study, I think it was twenty thousand dollars because we wanted to go, that's one of the first things you do. So we, we've just, a lot has been spent so far to date, and we want to continue to go forward. And if, as we're going forward, if there is a major global depression and we can't go forward, everything that we've done to date, you will own. Because in these agreements, what, you know, in these agreements, any of the planning work, any of the documents, those are always all, always owned by the property owner. And so, you know, if we're unable to do it, then you, in in someone else can, then you can see. But I I don't think, if we can't do it, it'll be, there would be a major global depression of sorts. So we're, we're very confident of spending money and going forward.
Let me, let me indicate, there's probably terms of, Mr. Doe, the concerns the city would have in terms of any agreement with Mr. Sheldon would be really broken into two categories. The first is those efforts to get the project to the entitlement stage where he can begin construction. And our concern from a city perspective is the timeliness of that. In other words, we would create timelines and performance requirements for him to meet in order to go forward. In other words, if it's six months or nine months, whatever those timelines are, those are all pre-construction matters. But the city's major concern is that the project just kind of sits out there, never really gets developed. So that's the one phase. The second phase would be the construction phase. And your concern there is, you don't want to get, once the construction begins, you don't want to be in a situation where the project gets built and halfway through it, the developer is unable to perform for a variety of reasons, including So what you do is you create then milestones within the project, you try to segment the project so that you have certainly goals and requirements for them to perform, each of which is tied to a dollar recovery for the city. And you compartmentalize that in such a way that they're meeting those goals. So you're not left with this massive unfinished project. You know, for example, right now, I'm working on a project in one of my cities. They're building seven hundred, seven hundred homes. And they're essentially building them twenty five to forty homes at a time. So each time, so they don't end up with seven hundred homes half built. So that's why they're, they're minimizing their exposure, but yet clearly in the development process, we would want to be sure to protect the city's interest, that performance is required. The last thing is, we do have the ability to require, we would require performance bonds as part of that process.
What is a, what is a performance bond? What does that mean?
What, what it is, it ensures that we have a revenue source. So if Mr. Sheldon failed to perform, we could then go to his insurance, the performance insurance company, and get those revenues to cover those costs. So we would get reimbursed all of those expenses. So he's, his failure to perform would result in a insurance recovery for us.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any concerns or any question from member of the city council?
Yes. Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Okay, I know from the last meetings that our staff and I believe your firm as well had in public, you know, public meetings. You know, I heard that this, you know, people were really expressing an interest in wanting to keep the senior community center intact, like they don't want you to touch that besides upgrading or making it look nicer. But so what are you doing about this community center?
Yes, we'd heard that the seniors did not want, did not, did not want it modified. And I think I touched on earlier what we would be doing to work on the sections that was across from the proposed city council, and we would work with the city on making enhancements to the senior center.
Okay, just minor enhancement. Structural enhancement, just
Probably more, I wouldn't say minor, I would say nice cosmetic, cosmetic enhancements.
Okay, so are you have more meetings? I don't know if you touched on this earlier. Are you going to have more public relations meeting or, you know, Q and A meetings and open it up to the public to come in like you did years
Absolutely. So once we have the project defined, and we know what it is, that we know it, then we would go out and and talk more, more to the community.
Okay. Yeah, I have the community input. This, you know, this is a big project, and we'd like to get their input.
I have another questions. I have other questions. I saw that you presented two different plan, Plan A and Plan B. Those two plan that, you know, at some time, is there any more plan? That's my first question. That will be present or when are we going to decide on whether it's going to be Plan A, B, or C? Time frame wise.
We, we have multiple plans we could show you, but we think from our, everything we've done, it seems to boil down to that. That would be two of your top two options. But if you would like to see another option, we could certainly show you another option.
No, I I just, I should ask the question that those two plan that you have right now. Well, I don't have any problem with that. I mean, you know, I just, the second question is, you know, at some point that we have to decide on whether it's Plan A or Plan B, right?
Yes, you do, in the, in the next few, in the next few months, please.
Okay, after, if you come back for the next time?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So basically, the city council, we don't have to decide whether or not we go with option A or B, but I think that if, if the council in the future wants to go with Plan B, you know, I believe that the city will have extra money, right? Because based on Plan B, I think the cost only took ten million. And then A, so I think the cost is about sixteen million, if I remember correctly. And I think that Plan A and Plan B, Mr. Sheldon, they provide an outdoor space. I think the good thing about a project, we have outdoor, we still have a sunken garden, and even the sunken garden is proposed to be bigger, open space, and more housing. So we think that this project is good for the city. If the city council, if none of you have the, none of you have any other concern or question, I'd like to move to give Mr. Sheldon ninety days. Continue to work with staff to come to finalize all the detail and come back with an agreement. So that is my motion.
Well, I say, I second that motion.
I also think you need to have staff do some analysis of the, of the proposed alternatives as well. So that you're more, more fully informed. In other words, going to do a development agreement, you've got to choose which of these plans you want. And it seems to me, process wise, you'd want your staff to analyze Plan A, Plan B, and come back with some recommendations. And then once you decide that, we could develop a development agreement based upon the direction you give us.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I, I have one request, Mr. Sheldon, will you be so kind for your PowerPoint to the city clerk, and I'd like to have a copy of that. And will I, I'd like to make a substitute motion to the motion that we, we have Mr. Sheldon bringing back the report after the election in November. Instead of ninety day, ninety days will be what, October?
I think ninety days after election.
I think we I think we need to go back to what
Ninety days will be after the election.
Attorney Jones had mentioned earlier, I mean, we're just moving too fast. We don't know what the land's worth. There's, we don't know what the options are going to cost, if we can afford the options, us choosing an option tonight to me is, I think we're literally putting the cart before the horse. This is not appropriate. I think we need to let staff, give them a time to look over these proposals, get an assessment of the property value, make sure that the partners are in place before we, we sign over, I mean, literally, city hall is one of the biggest assets our city has addition to our parks. And for us is to, you know, I believe when I just give it away to couple, to a PowerPoint presentation, I think to me, not appropriate. So
Have a motion?
Second, well, I'll second that motion, but I think it should, if you could add in that motion that gives staff the opportunity to review the proposals, look at the cost benefit analysis, look at the property values, and see if this is something we can afford to get into.
Is that a motion or?
What is the difference between Kalson Bedo motion and my motion? Because ninety day after election anyway.
But it is after the election.
I think you should amend your motion to include the ability for staff to be able to review the proposals feasibility and to the cost of the property that, I mean, we're selling state hall essentially. And we're basing it off a five-year appraisal. That's not appropriate. I think we need to do a new appraisal, and we need to make sure we can afford what we're getting into. And for us to run into this is not appropriate.
Okay, I I agree with that. I think we should have the staff to look over the proposal and get new appraisal, and then whatever the staff decision is going to be, and then we'll give Mr. Sheldon ninety days.
Yes, that's appropriate. I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I'd like to modify my motion, substitute motion.
I believe Mr. Sheldon has some comments.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. If, if whatever motion is passed, if it also could add extending the ENA is a part of that, because as we're talking, that would be great. And wanted to say, I fully support working with staff. I think we have to do that, and we want to get that information from them as we have this dialogue on, on the various items, and never was an attempt to have anything passed tonight at a final decision. I think this is, this is a step forward to get information, to get an agreement going with the city attorney, so we can bring all that back to you. But we also, please include the, the ENA is also, the ENA as well.
So basically, the, the substitute motion, if, you know, we want to go forward with a substitute motion, we need to extend an ENA, right? City attorney?
That could be included, yes.
For how long?
I think we, we'd have to come back with the ENA since it's not listed on the agenda. We could, you could give us direction to put it on for an extension. But I, I'll defer to Dick on how you want to handle that.
Well, we'll, we'll need a written ENA extension, but if we get general counsel direction, we can then make the, bring it back as, as directed by counsel.
Mr. Sheldon, I have a question to ask you. So if the city council extend the E, the ENA, and for you to continue to work with staff and then bring it back, so staff can have some saying, are you okay with that? Are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely. I thought that was kind of contemplated in part and parcel of what you had talked about, but I think all council members are saying very similar things.
Councilmember Bedo, so are you comfortable with that? Simply to motion?
Yes.
Can you clarify your motion, sir?
Councilmember Bedo, is anywhere that you can repeat your motion again?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to have the city staff look over Mr. Sheldon's proposal. And then to determine whether or not it's feasible for the city to move forward and recommend necessary changes in its proposal. And then we will have give Mrs. Sheldon 90 day comeback with the report.
And bring back and bring back the proposed E and A extension?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't we need to extend Mr. Sheldon 90 day E and A?
So so we just basically made clear, Mr. Bedo's motion was was to go back, have staff review the project, look at the appraisal, do an analysis, we'll come back to the council. And then at that point in time, give Mr. Sheldon another 90 days for the agreement, as I understand it. During that time period, we would have to have an extended E and A if the council so desires.
I want to clarify that that'd be the feasibility study and recommendations made by city staff.
That's my understanding of Mr. Bedo's motion, yes.
Mr. Sheldon, are you comfortable with that or you have any other to say?
Just so we can, it's taken time and there's been criticism of it's taking so long. Could the development and disposition disposition agreement with the city attorney also come back as well? So we have that. That takes time to get together. They can, that can be worked out with the city attorney.
I'm getting away the store right now. I think we're in our motion and move forward. We keep adding to it and it's like, let's just roll in whatever we can roll into.
Okay, before before we actually vote, taking a vote on that, I do have a question for you, Mr. Sheldon. If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I heard that you said that you over the last since the last time that we extend 90 days, you have you have meeting, three meeting on Zoom with with the staff already, right? What did you, what did you, we had been discussing about? What you were talking about, I thought that those meetings were taking place so that we can, you know, talk about these issues already.
One of the meetings talked about, you know, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, development and of the different of the different things to put into the plan. We talked about the capacity of the parking structure and what other, but any other entities that might have rights to the parking structure. My you've got, we talked about quite a few things. We talked about how we could, I think we, how we would structure a contract if we were to move forward, which is what's happening right now. So there was, you know, many, many things that went over. They're part of the conversation. The the point of this past nine days was to determine the financial feasibility, which I believe, which I believe that we have done that. And that was the conversation was how we would go about and show that. And that was also part of our conversations. If I could, if I may just add, I would personally like to see so we can afford move forward. And I would, I agree with everything that that you know, council member do has said. We would like to also, at the same time, at our expense, work to have an agreement put together. So we don't, we can work concurrently on things and not have to go one that up and, you know, one after another, but do things at the same time. So we can, you know, continue, continue to push forward. So we'd like to see an agreement put together with the city attorney and have that brought back to the council at night time. I think.
Agree to something where we don't even know the feasibility of the cost or the profit. I mean, this doesn't make sense. Why would we make an agreement when we don't even know who we're working with?
It does make sense because.
No sense, absolutely no sense.
Let me explain why. Because when they agree, there's so many other processes, like as Mr. Jones had said about having a scope of performance and a lot of other things, and you're doing those as we're valid, as we're validating.
You know, I I think I think we need to go with what we have to do things to protect the cities this point to show. And let's let's just move forward with what we have to do. And then, you know, you can come back and and make your presentation again if we have to, okay?
I'd like to have clarification on this before we we move on. I I know that you have you and staff have meeting, three meetings already before you presented this to us today, tonight. But if we extend for another three months so that the you can, your staff can look into this and then meeting with you again. Will it be added value for for that? Or we just, you know, just discussing any, you know, all the things that we already talked about. I want to make sure that we have, if we extend three more months, which I don't have a problem with that, but it has to be planned so that we can get to what we want to do. And that question is going for for Mr. Sheldon and also for the staff.
Yeah, I I like to verify that. I mean, like my motion, I mean, like I want to give Mr. Sheldon and staff another 90 days to continue to work with the detail and come up with an agreement. But after 90 days, if the council don't like agreement, you know, the council, you know, have at a time, we have the final vote. But I mean, we already go back and forth, go back and forth many times. So I would not think that is appropriate to, you know, give back to staff and ask staff to come back and have any say.
I disagree. I mean, we haven't talked about this project in three years. And now we're talking about it, you know, out of left field, and then we just want to slam dunk it tonight. Does it make sense? We have no time to process any of this. I don't recall receiving the PowerPoint presentation or details that we're going over today. And now we're approving a project that we haven't had a chance to fully, you know, vet, especially given the fact that we haven't given staff the appropriate time to review the options and the feasibility options to make recommendations. From my understanding, this was simply a presentation. That was all. And now we're taking action on an item that we have not had the opportunity to process, much like get staff recommendations on next steps. We're talking about City Hall. We're not talking about a parking lot, you know, somewhere in some corporate yard. This is City Hall, the largest portion of property we have available to us. And for us to run through, because we like a PowerPoint presentation, to me is, again, inappropriate. So yeah, I think we're going way too far.
Yeah, you know what? I I I agree. You know, our job is a gatekeeper for our city, and we need to protect the interests of of city property. And right now we through going through risk management and just want to make sure that we the city staff have a neutral set of eyes, the city attorney looking to this issue. Because we have the answer to the resident of the city. We are selling City Hall to a developer.
And the parking structure. I don't know if you realize that we're also selling off the parking structure. Where do, where did we ever agree to that?
Okay, and we, and we owe the city to cover all the basic and we do not, in turn. I do not believe that we need to rush into anything tonight. We need to have us some independent people look into this to see it's fair for the city and fair for Mr. Sheldon's. We have the answer to the resident of of the city. And I think it's fair to have staff who continue with this motion to have staff look at the Mr. Sheldon's proposals. To see if it's fair for the city and fair for Mr. Sheldon is doable, and we're going from there.
I don't have a problem with, you know, extending for another three days for the staff to meet with the Sheldon company. But once again, I go back to my question for the staff. Staff, you met with Sheldon for three meetings in the last 90 days. Who, do you still think that there are you need to have more time to get with them and discuss this thing out? And what is your next plan to do for this? Sir, I'm asking, I am asking staff, I'm asking staff, let's ask, let's.
Councilmember Bedo, I think you should let Councilmember win, finish. Councilmember win?
Yes, the the question go directly to staff. What do you think? Can you let us know?
Yes, like I should, I think it deserves some clarification that that the Zoom meetings we had were very early after the expansion of the E and A. So I believe they were held in early May to provide input to make sure that Mr. Sheldon had all the documentation that he needed. Make sure, you know, all options were available to him and, you know, let us, this kind of new team that's here provide our thoughts. So we we have not done an analysis of the project that that's here. Those meetings took place.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I love last, Alexa.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I, you got cut off the last.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was I was just repeating that that the meetings took place in in May. And so we have not conducted an analysis of what was presented tonight. The meetings were held early on. He had all the resources he needed.
Well, let me get clarity on that question if I could one more time, Alexa. So you have not had the opportunity to receive all the information and conduct a thorough analysis in terms of the feasibility of this project?
That's correct. You know, we've had kind of a first pass look at at some numbers. But yeah, I would certainly not call it an analysis and we have not hired an appraiser or gotten to that point yet.
And then my second question would be, is there like a set number of meetings you must have before you approve a project this size? Like, is there like a one, two, or five minute limit meeting that you have and then you have to decide? Or I don't, I'm not sure where that's coming from.
I don't, I mean, I don't believe there's a number of meetings pondered in the E and A on a contractual basis that that have to be held with with staff or the developer.
I mean, is there like a minimum threshold of meetings you must have when you're building a project this size? Because what I'm hearing is that you've had three meetings, so therefore you should have, you should have already done your due diligence and had a recommendation for us to provide, to provide us.
Yeah, I I don't think there's there's a specific number of meetings. I think it's probably just more about, you know, the the timing and, you know, time needed to perform analysis.
Yeah, I I think we're totally being unfair to staff and we're not giving the opportunity to do their job. And give them the opportunity to set herself to win. I mean, this is a very important valuable piece of property and for us to like railroad through it because we saw a really fancy PowerPoint, I think is inappropriate.
Mr. Sheldon?
I just like to clarify, we submitted the core of what you received. The council received the site plan, the performer of the numbers to Alexa on July 23. And Alexis submitted that information to her consultant for review. And her consultant came back and informed her of their consultant's opinion. I don't know what that was back. So there's already been some quite a bit of preliminary work done on the information. And I just want to assure when there's going to be more work done by staff, and I'm not suggesting they not do that. I'm just suggesting that if we take the current schedule that has been presented, it'll take three months to do more work. It shouldn't, it shouldn't take three months.
When did you submit the proposal for the city to review?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't take 90 days to review this information.
When did you submit the proposal to staff for the review?
On July 23.
Oh, so how many days ago was that?
About three weeks tomorrow.
So they should have done, they should have completed this thorough review in three weeks?
No, but they would have had an initial review. But what I was saying in my answer to the mayor's question was that we've given them some information and there's more, there's a lot more to do. And no one's suggesting not to do that. I am absolutely suggesting to do that. We all know that's going to happen. What I'm saying though is on this schedule, we won't be back to the council until February of next year, if we go on the current schedule, 90 days to do this work. And then another 90 days to do the agreement. That puts us in the middle of February of 2021, to 2021. So I think it should work.
You had three years prior to that to work on this project.
You know what? You know, I I understand, I talked to the interim city manager, Mayor Sherri Johnson, and our staff are overworked because of the COVID-19. Okay, we we have a lot of work. The staff have a lot of work. And in three weeks, you expecting the city staff to go through and have a complete analysis of a project this big, it's not reasonable. But I think that we have hurried up for Mr. Sheldon. I think we need to consider my motion and have the city staff to go through, go over Mr. Sheldon's proposals and and come back to the reporter's city council to see if this project is workable for for the city and for Mr. Sheldon's.
One more thing that may help is talking about 90 days, that's the limit. It seems to me that if staff can move quicker, they should be able to meet sooner than the 90 days. So to that extent, there doesn't necessarily have to be 90 days. It may be a shorter time period.
I agree with that. Do we have a motion on the floor?
We do.
Mr. Sheldon, so how many days that you believe that is really fair for you and fair for staff, you know, or the city staff to look at that and come back?
I don't want to say, I mean, I think I think they could come back in 30 to 45 days from now. I know some people wanted to come back after the election. I think it come back in 30 to 45 days, but who knows? And there's, there's different things to look at. There's the appraisal of the land, which just takes some time to get going. And then there's just the analysis of the of the cost of construction, which is a different analysis. There's different types of analysis that staffs would want to go through and talk to third party consultants. 45 days should be enough to do those things.
If I weigh in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to share that the last time I ordered an appraisal, it was a 45 day turnaround.
So staff, you only need 45 days?
It was, it was 45 days to get an appraisal last time that I ordered one. Granted, you know, that's based on market conditions and what sort of availability the appraisers have, but that's not necessarily a very quick process. And that's certainly a a key component. I just want to make you aware that that those timelines are, you know, out of our control.
Vice Mayo, you like to say anything?
Well, yeah, I I agree with our city attorney, Dick Jones. I think well, we, you know, I I know that we had rushed and we had questioned the Sheldon group as to why they take so long that rest. So I think you know, staff should move, you know, as fast as they can. But I think three months and after election, I think, I mean, I think if if we get the information before that, we should be able to come back before, they should be able to come back before that. So I'm in agreement with the city attorney.
And you're okay with the motion, right? So.
Could you read my, I'm lost. I don't know what motion was the last one, which one?
We have a city, the city clerk can report you back. Christine, do you have it?
Yeah, so I have, I have, I have a substitute motion on the floor. Is that where we're at?
We have the motion by Mr. Bede.
Yeah, so that, so the substitute motion was by Mr. Bede, seconded by Councilman Contreras, and it was to direct staff to look at the feasibility and appraisal, et cetera, details of the, you know, of the project. But also to provide direction to extend the E and A so that that's what I have.
So Vice Mayo, are you clear with that or you got confused?
Could you repeat one more time? Repeat one more time.
Sure. So to provide direction to staff, give staff the ability to review the feasibility of the projects as well as appraisal and other details. And also to extend the E and A so that Mr. They can work with Mr. Sheldon.
So I don't hear anything about three months or what? Or as soon as possible. I know I heard three months before, but did we do away with the three months? I think we should just put it in.
It's it's essentially to come back in 90 days with, but.
I would say or sooner. Can I make a substitute of a substitute?
I think Mr. Bede's motion includes.
Hold on a second. I'm really sorry. City attorney, is there a word that you can explain to Vice Mayo, the difference between my motion and Councilmember Bede's motion? I think Vice Mayo did not really quite understand.
Well, I I guess because 90 days is after the election. So, right? Is that right? And that's the.
That is correct.
Proposal.
It could be done sooner. I mean.
Or sooner, I think that's fair.
So basically, the different, I see the attorney, is there a word that you can explain one more time, the difference between my motion and Councilmember Bede's motion? So Vice Mayo will understand.
As as I understood, it was this, Mr. Bede's motion was to have staff do its analysis, do the appraisal, and come back within 90 days. But he says that that 90 days might be sooner. and come back within 90 days. When he says that, that 90 days might be sooner, if the appraisal gets done, the analysis is done beforehand. So it doesn't mean that it has to be all the way through 90 days. It could be sooner. Secondly, you included in your motion, Mr. Mayor, a discussion regarding the development agreement. And you included the fact that we'd also look at developing a development agreement as part of this process. And there was some discussion and objection that we were moving the development agreement too fast before we had the staff analysis. That was, that was the distinction.
So Vice Mayor Ho?
So I, I just want to make sure that it's in, uh, councilman's title that 90 days or sooner. I would be
We, we understand that. Yes.
Cause it wasn't there. I mean, I know you said it, but I don't think he said it. So
Mr. Doe, I assume it's okay if we come back sooner than 90 days.
All right.
So Councilmember Doe's motion that, you know, the staff will look into it and come back. You know, okay. And, and at a time that council will decide whether or not we will extend the E and A, right?
I want, I would like to have the staff to go over the proposal, however long it take, and come back with it.
Okay.
And then we will
Okay.
About whatever else. But I did, you know, it doesn't have to be 90 day. As long as they complete the report, looking at Mr. Sheldon's proposal.
Okay.
Does it make sense?
One more
Just to me.
The one more time for clarification purposes, it's to have staff review feasibility and other details of the project, including appraisal, et cetera, provide direction, or to provide direction staff to extend the E and A. Cause we need to extend the E and A. And then just to bring back at some point, once it's complete.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I kind of have a problem with that. Okay. And let me, I kind of agree to, um, the motion, uh, the recommendation that, uh, Vice Mayor had. You know, it's 90 day or sooner. We have to have a definite timeframe. We can't have open timeframe. And then, you know, let's say that, you know, staff that work on it and then the project can pull out whenever the staff want to do it. I'd like to have the staff come back, whether it's ready to proceed or not ready to proceed, unless we have a timeframe to work with. So if, I don't know that the Vice Mayor had, make the, the substitute motion for, uh, 90 day or sooner. If that's the case, I will second it.
So we have
You know what? I think the staff, Alexa, would just mention that the last appraisal was, it took what, 45 days? So, you know, it depends on the, uh, even, even in COVID-19, it's, it's affect everything. So even, uh, the city staff overwork. So, um, you know, I, I don't think to put a timeframe, because like I mentioned earlier, we are selling city hall. We have to do our due diligence to make sure that we make the right decision. We have to answer to the voters. We have to answer to the resident of the city. We are selling city hall. And it seems to me like the, like the majority of city council are in such a hurry to approve such a huge project after several years of, uh, on the drawing board. Only a few more days, uh, I don't think it's going to make any difference.
Well, I don't appreciate you saying majority of the, when I just had only one ten, one chance to speak. And so I think I, I mean, I don't, really don't appreciate your comments, uh, whenever you lump us in like that, you know? So let's not try to pick a fight. So anyway, um, I just think that we heard earlier, uh, Alexa said, uh, 45 days. And I think I heard 90 days been thrown around. And so I'm, and then I heard, yeah, city attorney Dick Jones said, um, 90 days or sooner, whichever comes first. So I'm in agreement with, you know, bringing back, um, 90 days or sooner. So you know, these are the things that have been, that had already been proposed. And so I'm just agreeing with one of the proposals. And I think what's really fair is 90 days or sooner. And I think staff mentioned 45 days and we're giving 90 days. So I think that's plenty of time. I think that's reasonable. While we, we might have the election to, to worry about, you know, I don't think we should penalize, uh, the Sheldon group. So and, and I think that staff doesn't, it doesn't sound like it's a, it's a problem. So, uh, I think
Are you willing, are you willing to amend your motion like 90 or less? Councilmember Doe?
No, I think he did that. So he, she just said he That was your
I want to be clear with, with Alexa. Is, is that sufficient time to review and analyze a proposal? After you receive the appraisal? Cause you mentioned the appraisal, they up to 45 days. So that gives you what? 15 days to bang out a, a, a report?
Yeah, there, there are quite a number of moving parts. I mean, as mentioned, analysis would be necessary. So depending on the timeline of the consultant. Yeah, and no, we wouldn't be able to finalize any kind of a report until, you know, we had an appraised value. That's certainly, um, a big part of the conversation and, you know, where we'd want to head. And, you know, as been, has been mentioned, um, we are absolutely overwhelmed with work. So there's, there's not a lot of stuff we can just drop. But on, you know, we do want to support and move forward. However, the council directs, and I'm happy to make sure that that happens. But you know, we, I think we do need to be, you know, try to be reasonable with, with the timelines. And I don't see, um, being done a whole lot sooner than 90 days, you know, in order to get, to get all the information that we need.
So is that a 90 day in low in the motion of Councilmember Doe? Because that is your motion.
As lo, as long as it take for the city staff to have adequate time and resources to file a
So if, if, if the 90, if the 90 days or sooner is not included in, um, in, uh, Councilmember Doe's motion, then I would like to make a substitute motion to have a 90, a 90 day or sooner for, for
We are, so we already, so we already have a substitute motion. Um, it would, it would be best to vote on that substitute motion. And if that motion does not pass, then you, someone can make another substitute motion, but that would be best.
So basically, Councilmember Doe's motion are not including 90 day or less. Am I right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. There we go.
Okay. So we're voting on the substitute motion right now, which does not include the 90 day or less. So
No.
Vice Mayor Ho?
No.
Councilmember Contreras?
I'll be clear. I mean, I don't think that we even asked staff what their timeframe would be. I think it's completely unfair that during this COVID, during the pandemic, we're asking them to drop everything to work on this project. And essentially they mentioned they had 45 days to conduct the appraisal. And that only gives them 15 days to put something together.
It's 45 days.
City Hall. I mean, I think to me, we're rushing into something and I, I, I think
For 90 days, that left 45 days, not 15 days, sir.
No, you can win the 90 days.
Yes.
All right. So, uh, city club, continue to do roll call vote, please.
Okay. So Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Uh, yes.
And then Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
City Council.
That, that motion failed two to three. With Councilmember or with Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Ho and Councilmember Nguyen voting no.
Well, you could make a motion to include the 90 days or less then.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Uh, is that, uh, a motion made by, uh, Vice Mayor Ho? If not, I will.
Vice Mayor Ho?
There's no motion right now. So
Okay.
Someone just needs
I will make a motion with the 90 day, uh, or less or sooner.
And does that motion include the extension of the E and A?
Exactly. Yes, everything
For 90 days.
Everything the same as, uh, Councilman Doe. Just add it to 90 days or sooner.
Okay. So I need a second.
Yeah, I think, uh, earlier I already heard 90 days. So I, 90 days or sooner. If, if not, it would be 90 days. So I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
Did you second that? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I did.
He did. She seconded it.
All right. So we have motion and second for 90 days.
Yes. So that is a motion by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho. And again, that is to, um, directly review feasibility and appraisal, et cetera. Um, bring back at some point, but also to extend the, um, the E and A with Steve Sheldon, Sheldon Development. Mayor Tom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
I think we're being unreasonable. So no.
Councilmember Doe?
You're muted. You're muted.
We are putting too much pressure on the city staff during the COVID-19. And, uh, I don't have a problem with this city staff conducting the study, uh, the, whatever, whatever it'll longer take. But adding, uh, a certain deadline, uh, and this time is not reasonable. So I vote no.
Okay. And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Make that motion with, uh, Councilmembers Contreras voting no.
You know, for the record, may I? Make a statement?
Please.
Yes. For the record, I believe, you know, we have been, as a council, we've been questioning the Sheldon group as to why they've been taking so long. And then at this, now, you know, things are moving along and then all of a sudden we're like, we want to slow down. So I don't get it. I know back when they wanted the extension. And, and then we, you know, hesitated to grant them the extension. So that was back and was it April? And so as you know, the, the recall and then the COVID and then all those things. And, and yet you didn't, you weren't very forgiving. And then you gave the, we gave the extension and now they, you know, they're moving along and, and, and then you want to, you know, you want them to come to stop, uh, to halt again. And then you, we give them excuses. And so I'm thinking, you know, hey, this is not something that I would, would expect from this council. I would like, I mean, I'm, I just want to put it on the record that we're just, you know, contradicting ourselves. So back in April, we said, move along. Why are you taking so long? And now we're saying, slow down. Why are you taking, why are you going so fast? So we're, we're really contradicting ourselves. That's all I want to put on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement and respond to that. I mean, you know, you have to, uh, you have to compare apples to not apple to oranges. Okay. Back in April, back in March, that was way before COVID-19. The condition was different. Now is that, now it's COVID-19, city staff is overwhelming with work. So we have to take into consideration, we are selling city hall to a developer. We have to give staff ample time to work on a project. And put in a deadline on something that we don't know how long does it take to complete a comprehensive report. It's not reasonable.
All right. Uh, next item, uh, 5.4, extension of interim city manager employment agreement. City Attorney?
Yes, this is a, an extension of Mrs. Johnson's interim contract. It is for an additional six months, uh, February 13th, 2021 would be the timeframe. But this is an at will agreement. At any point in time, the city council, upon a vote by the council, can terminate this agreement. So it's an at will agreement. What it does do is set her compensation, which is set at 200, let's see, 223,000 223,212 dollars. We will request your approval of this, uh, interim agreement extension.
All right. So do I have? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. And I want to thank Sherry for her leadership during this pandemic. And her patience. As, um, you know, we lost two of our main, uh, leaders here in our city, our city manager and assistant city manager. And for her to step in and move, move, uh, chairs around and, and organize a city to make it functional, you know, especially during this pandemic, to me is commendable. So I want to acknowledge her for that and her leadership. And again, you know, I want to remind you, but we're, we're in the middle of pandemic. And things are not normal. Nor do we wish they be normal. I mean, in terms of this being the new normal, but I think we need to acknowledge her and thank her for her leadership and her patience. I think, uh, that this item here shows our trust in her and, you know, I know, I know we're going to continue, the process will continue if I find a new city manager, but I feel very comfortable, uh, in trusting her to continue doing her work. And I think, uh, uh, I feel very proud to support that.
Second.
Second.
All right. All right. So we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Yes, we have a motion by Councilmember Contreras and second of a Mayor Ta. It's to approve the extension of the interim city manager employment agreement between Sherry Johnson and the city of Westminster for a term to expire February 13th, 2021. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right. So next we have common and request for agenda items from city council agency member including AEB 1234 report when required. Vice Mayor Ho?
Yeah, I'd like to propose the zone text amendment review regarding accessory dwelling unit to be brought back for discussion at the next meeting.
I'm sorry.
Request?
What, what was that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would like to, to bring back the zone text amendment, uh, review, uh, of the, uh, accessory dwelling unit to be brought back for review.
I honor that request, uh, second request.
All right. So that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's to add an agenda item regarding, um, zone text amendment review regard of, uh, ADUs or additional, or accessory dwelling unit. Okay, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
And the next, uh, thing I might ask before, I may not there's a lot of noise, um, over at someone's side. I wanted to know if, um, you've done anything about FEMA money, um, to help clean up our city. Um, because, you know, this COVID time, we want to make sure we take care of certain areas that have been probably should, should be cleaned. And I don't know if we could, uh, obligate, you know, the owners to clean, or would we be able to find some FEMA, uh, dollars to, to help them? I know last spoke about that. I don't know if anybody, uh, do anything about it, any research, any findings?
I believe we looked into, into some of that and, and the lawyer, I mean, Dick, maybe you can chime in here. I know going on to private properties is, could be problematic. Um, we do clean up while we can. Um, we do have, you know, money that we can do that kind of stuff. And we've been using our CPU people a lot to, uh, go up and clean things, clean up areas. But it's to specifically get onto a land and do their cleanup. That could probably be an issue.
I would say I'm asking that we go, I mean, it wouldn't be reasonable for us to go and clean up anybody's mess. But we're not going to say whose mess it is or whose, you know, I mean, in the interest of, you know, public safety and health, health and safety. I'm just asking if there's anything that we could, like either we send a letter from my attorney and say, hey, clean up, or are we going to give them the, the financial assistance? Because knowing that these things cost, you know, and one of the may, or I'm sure Because knowing that these things cost, you know, and one of the may, or I'm sure the biggest reason people don't want to clean up is they don't have the finance or the resource, financial resource to clean up with. So I just want to ask city attorney or or code enforcement, anything we could do. Because right now, I just think um, this is, you know, this is the 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 probably the time that we need to focus on, you know, areas like that, that are not so clean. And that could, I mean, I've I've heard many people mention over the past two years um, about, you know, certain city and certain um, you know, supermarkets, et cetera. You know, I don't want to point a finger on any particular market, I don't want to name anybody, any organizations. But I think it, this is just in general, is there anything we could do? If we could identify um, an area that needs to be cleaned up, and it happens to be a private property, could we obligate them to clean up with a letter from us? If so, what can we do? If, what kind of letter? And it's got to be um, a stronger statement than, you know, letter from a code enforcement.
Question, uh, how is that different from what code enforcement already does?
Yeah, I don't see them doing, so I'm just wondering if there's anything that could be that 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 would stick, you know?
Yeah, well, let me, let me make a couple of suggestions. First off, uh, the primary responsibility is code enforcement, perhaps code enforcement. Could report back to you, explain what they're doing. Going on to private property is a little more problematic, we have to be invited in. If we go on the private property, in some cases, you have to get a warrant. Uh, but again, code enforcement should be doing those things. We can back up code enforcement and do periodically with a letter demanding an in-city hall meeting. We bring the property owner down, we have a meeting with them and try to work with them and try to develop a a program for cleaning up. The other part of this, which is a little more problematic, and that is we generally don't spend government money to improve private property. But you could develop a program, if you think it's appropriate, to make improvements, code enforcement improvements on private property. Maybe by way of a loan of some sort, but that would be something that would have to be developed by a staff and presented to you as a possible uh, program to help uh, private businesses.
I mean, we have developed a a program to help them with the facade, right? It's just that.
Oh, sure.
Advantage of that program, but um, you know, and then we've asked them to clean up their bushes or their overgrown trees, and that's on their property, so why not this? I mean, I've seen, you know, and I've heard a lot of complaints over the years, and I hesitate to, I I understand about property, right? And, you know, they're, these are private properties, however, in light of COVID. That's why I'm saying that I think that, you know, health issues here, so.
I believe that, I believe code enforcement can't be more aggressive. We can come back with a report.
Yes, and I asked for that last time, so I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear anybody mention anything. So could I have that next time, please?
Anything else? Vice Mayor?
No, thank you so much. That's it.
Remember Contras?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, I know that we, the testing conversation and in terms of having our own testing location is far from reach from us at the moment. I'd like to see us uh, revisit the ability to help some of our members who are suffering from job loss and possibly, you know, losing their, uh, not being able to pay the rent to revisit the ability to to help cover, do another rent um, assistance program. That money sitting in our, sitting in city hall is not doing anything for anyone. It should be, we should use that, those resources to help our community now when it needs the most. Um, I've seen and heard the stories of families that are going without, um, especially now that the the extra six hundred dollar uh, additional compensation to um, workers, I'm sorry, unemployment is no longer there, so um, I'd like to, I'd like to place an item to have direct council, direct city staff to um, review our COVID or CARES Act funding to see if there's any available dollars, and if so, bring forward an item to do a second round of rental assistance.
My second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
So, councilmember Contras, request?
Okay, so motion on the floor made by councilmember Contras, second of Vice Mayor Ho. That's to direct, to bring an item back to direct staff to review CARES Act bunny for um, a second round of rental assistance.
We we just make sure that, you know, of course, we have to pay for, you know, our own city staff to make sure our our emergency staff is taken care of. But I know there's the dollars there that we should really review and get them out to the community as soon as possible. I mean, I mean, you, there are stories of people doing these types of activities, and you have to wait a month to hear back or, you know, weeks. And that time, people are losing their homes. So, again, an item, it should be a prepared item with with an up or down vote by the next council meeting.
Okay, uh, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Anything else?
Want to say that I appreciate the conversation we had on our city hall. That's a a big chunk of property that we have, you know, our job is to be trustees of these locations. The public has entrusted us to look after our assets and our properties. And so I want to make sure that that we're doing, giving staff the time, given that they are short staff and the support they need to review a a project of this scale. It is a really fairly large project that involves selling off city hall, parking lots, and including our, our parking structure, which I think we really need to be really careful. And I understand the enthusiasm and the excitement behind developing city hall. But I do think we need to really take time to make sure we're able to digest it. Again, I I hear uh, Vice Mayor Ho's comments in regards to the expediting the project and the need to, but I think that conversation was all pre- pre-COVID. You know, pre-COVID, pre- pre-loss of our city managers, city manager. I know that city staff right now is stretched thin, we don't have adequate staffing at the moment. And I think it's just completely unfair to just dump a project of this scale on their laps and 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 start a stopwatch. And with a trap door at the bottom, I I just don't think that's fair. And I think this project is, we should really take our time in making sure it's something that we want to do in terms of selling off our assets. And um, again, I again, I just want to say that piece, but I want to, again, appreciate the conversation we had, and um, I'll leave it there.
Alright, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, so councilmember Doe?
You're muted, councilmember Doe.
Okay. I saw the face of his presence. Um, I um, I would like to thank you, Sherry Johnson, and I congratulate you for accepting uh, the contract offered by the uh, city council to uh, to work as a uh, interim city manager. Uh, just want to thank you for your leadership. So it's been uh, it's been a tough uh, what, five, six months? And you can continue uh, run the ships um, in the next few more months before we can uh, apply the permanent city manager. Um, thank you very much and congratulations. Um, I got, I got a couple of questions regarding the outdoor permit for, you know, businesses in 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 our city. Do we have uh, how how many do we have? How many have we issued in the past uh, couple of weeks? Do we have any idea, Alexa?
No, I'm sorry, I don't. I would need to get that from from the planning staff and our our.
And do we have the application for nail and hair? This is?
Yeah, we have, so we only have two applications. One is for specifically for restaurants, and one is for anyone else that wants to operate outdoors. And both of those are available.
Oh, okay, so it's not nail and hair specific?
It's not, no.
Okay, cool, thank you very much. Um, you know, I would like to uh, play in the next item on the uh, next meeting uh, with the uh, a staff report. A detailed staff report that um, included information of uh, the council. Uh, member of the county, council uh, pay and benefit annually. How much is uh, it's a, it's a council member get pay and how much uh, benefit we receive serving uh, as an elected official. And at the same time, uh, I'd like that report to include um, the surround neighborhood, neighboring city. So only a couple, so I have two or three cities, how much the elected official getting compensated for their service. Can you hear me?
That motion or?
Yes.
Was, is that just an informational, that's, because that's something?
Informational item, is there action though?
Yeah, because that's something, a report is something that um, as far as looking at what council benefits and pay are, most likely be my staff that would do the survey, but um, that can come back as an item of interest um, as a report.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's including uh, the neighboring cities, how much the elected official are getting compensated.
Yeah, to the city clerk at us, we can provide a report to you.
You don't need an item for that, you don't need a council item for that.
What was that?
You you don't need to make a council item out of that, they'll bring that forward without a, you don't need to have a second or anything like that.
We could, we could, we could prepare a report.
Alright, anything else, uh, councilmember Doe?
I know, that's it, thank you.
Alright, councilmember Nguyen?
Uh, I think we have talked enough for tonight, and so I have nothing else to to add it to, to meaning today, so I'm done, I'm done.
Alright, uh, thank you, councilmember Nguyen. Uh, I think that I really want to thanks uh, member from the community for uh, raising a concern. Want to thanks all the members of the city council and staff for uh, participate in the meeting. And I do have the question for interim city manager. I really appreciate everything she's done for the community and for the city. I know that we approve item five point two, care assistant. I have a question, so based on the report, uh, we have to, we have to show a receipt, right?
Yes, everything has to have a receipt. There's a lot of red tape behind, you know, getting money, and they will come and audit us. So we we have to be very careful uh, with our expenditures.
So up to this moment, how much that we already spent? Uh, I know that over the top of your head, but if you could able to provide us some number, I would appreciate that.
I think it's, is Erin, is Erin Bax, do you have a a number off the top of your head? I want to say between five and six hundred thousand, but correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Oh, up to this point, you already spent by what? Please.
Did you hear me? It's eight hundred fifteen thousand um, today, and that's actually as of last week. I think there's a a little bit more this week, um, but that continues every week um, that we're spending on it.
So up to this moment, our city already spent eight hundred, eight hundred thousand?
Correct.
I see. Alright, so we have like a few hundred, a few hundred left in the funding?
Yes, and that, we have to spend that, well, we can spend it up until December thirtieth. A lot of it's being used on overtime. Uh, you know, we lot for the city hall and the other, you know, facilities to make them safe. We continue to buy PPE and masks and.
That's correct. We also have the staffing at the front counter to check people, and we've done some um, equipment that we've purchased. We we set up city hall to make it safer, we're still buying protective supplies, sanitizers, uh, cleaning. Housing for the the ambulance drivers, um, public safety time, communication, there's a whole bunch of things that we've spent the money on.
Anything for our senior? In a care?
Yes, and I think Diana could speak to that more, but that's included in there as well.
I appreciate that.
I got one more question, if I have a chance.
Please.
Um, you know, look, the uh, the city uh, posters on the, on Facebook allow the one point nine million dollars care act for the businesses who have uh, ten or less employees. Is that something that we have discussed in the past, or is that something that the we, the application will be accepted in at the end of the August?
So I I I think, I think you have kind of two things that are coming together here. That larger dollar amount was part of the county grant program. We are kicking off a city grant program, it's a smaller dollar amount. I think it's, I want to say it's like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that, and that will um, launch uh, August twenty-fourth. The window, the application window will open for the city program.
Okay, oh, the the qualification for that uh, grant is businesses that have ten or less employees are correct?
That's correct.
So do, don't we have anything for uh, businesses that have larger number employees?
Um, not in a grant program, no, and those, those rules were placed upon us when when we got that money.
Oh, right.
And via the county, yes.
Okay, the county set that requirement.
Right, yes, it's it's essentially for micro businesses, yes, very small businesses.
Thank you, that's all, that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, another question I'd like to ask about one point nine million that we already approved. So basically, that only for all the expenditure from our city hall or anything that relating uh, to the city is not for the business community, is nothing uh, for the resident, am I right?
Do you want to answer that, Erin? I didn't know if you were going to. So the 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 uh, funding or the the money spent does include all of the things that we're doing through the community services and the money that Diana shop is doing. And it doesn't include the the grants or the loans, because that was separate funding. Like Alexa was just speaking about um, the three hundred thousand, that's different funding than this million nine.
Okay, thank you so much for that. With that, I adjourn the meeting, next regular meeting will be on Wednesday. Uh, September, I don't know exactly in September, because I looked at my agenda and it didn't spare September. It's even August, but June meeting, so what would be the next day in September?
It's so, sorry, you got, you you got an outdated agenda. Um, so it's September ninth is the next meeting.
So September ninth, alright.
We canceled the one on the twenty-sixth, so there's no meeting August twenty-sixth.
September nine, seven PM. Thank you so much, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Good night.